I'm going to call the meeting to order. It's one oh four Wednesday, June twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty three. This is a special meeting of the State Board of Education. And I guess Suzanne, if we could start off with a roll call.
Yes. Muhammad Joe. Kim Gleason.
Yes.
Tammy Colby. Lyle Jepson.
Present.
Tom Lovett.
Present.
Gabrielle Uche. Jenna O'Farrell.
Here.
Jennifer Samuelson.
Here.
Amira Severton. Rich Warner.
Here.
Heather Boucher.
Here.
Thank you. And it looks like Tammy is just coming into the meeting, too. So before we jump in, are there any amendments to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. If there are any members of the public who wish to be heard, we have set some time aside. There's a limit of two minutes per person. If you are present, you can either raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, hit star five to raise your hand. Not seeing any members of the public. Okay. So I will move on to the independent school approvals. And before I turn this over to Tom, I just, I want to take a minute and just really acknowledge the hard work and effort and dedication and perseverance by everybody, the schools, the agency. I know that agency staff put in some long hours, including over the weekend, to get us ready for this meeting today. The State Board of Ed Subcommittee held a special meeting yesterday and, you know, really took some information in at the last minute. And then, of course, everyone who's here today, really, what's motivating all of this sort of last minute activity, as we all know, is this moratorium that's coming down on July first. So the board felt it was very important and the agency agreed to really consider any schools that were in process, who were able to have their applications considered before that moratorium deadline. So I just, I wanted to take a minute and really acknowledge everyone's patience and persistence to get us here today. Thank you very much. So with that, I will turn it over to Tom Lovett.
Great. Yeah, and I'll start by echoing Jennifer's thanks and appreciation and add to that mix Lyle, who turned around the minutes from our, our meeting in record time yesterday. So thanks to all. We're going to begin with the Pond Brook Project, which is, we will end up, I'll make the motion at the end of this, this report. We're going to recommend initial approval as a general education independent school for grades seven through nine. This school, the Pond Brook Project occupies a shared space of the first floor of the former Bristol High School. It's a two semester academic enrichment program for LEAs. That's what it's been in this first pilot year. Now they are applying to be an approved independent school. They served fourteen students between those two semesters this past year. They are asking for a maximum capacity of twenty. The school is staffed by two and a half full-time equivalents and one support staff. They hire out adjuncts for art, phys ed, and health. The school operates under the umbrella of the Willowell Foundation, which is based in Moncton. It's a nonprofit that, whose values are global citizenship, sustainability, and ecological responsibility. So the philosophy of the school is aligned with that. It's embedded in the natural human communities of Vermont. They help students cultivate the relationship with self, society, and the natural world. They see themselves as a traveling school, even though they do have that base in Bristol where they, they meet every morning. Oftentimes, their school is out into the community and the natural world. They use existing community infrastructure like community spaces, and they do community service. They use public lands, the natural landscape around Bristol. And they even have a mobile school classroom, which is a converted school bus that they use when they go out to do some of their learning in, in the community. Their curriculum leads to, which, which meets all standards, leads to a portfolio of student learning. Their, their reporting out is in a narrative form. Their instruction is immersed in the outdoor and community-based learning activities. They differentiate not only by age, grade, and ability level, but also respond to individual learning styles. So I, I will move that the State Board of Education grants initial general education approval to the Pond Brook School in Bristol, Vermont, to serve students in grades seven through nine. This approval is for two years through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty five, which is the maximum term for an initial approval. This approval is conditional on the requirement that the school reports to the Agency of Education within five business days, whenever any changes occur in enrollment, programs, policies, facilities, financial capacity, staffing, or administration during the approval period. That's my motion. Rich Warner will second the motion.
All right. Thank you. It's been moved. It's been seconded. Is there any discussion? And actually, I do have a question. I was looking at the website, which looks lovely. But I just, I was struggling to find, and I was wondering if you could point us in the direction of the non-discrimination statement, because I could not find it easily, and I was just wondering if I was missing it.
Let me check here.
And that, that can be a question for the school if they have a faster answer.
Yeah, I believe we submitted that, but.
On our, on our student application.
Oh, it's on the student application. Okay.
Doesn't it have to be on the website?
We will.
Jen?
Put it on the website.
Well, so as of right now, the attestation clause says that the school complies with the Public Accommodation Aspect, Public Accommodations Act in all aspects of the school's admissions and operations. As of July first, that requirement extends to being posted on the website.
Yep, we can do that easily.
One other thing that I didn't add that was part of the meeting was the, the connection of this school to the LEAs in the area is very strong.
Um, Kim?
Um, I, what I heard the motion to be was approval for general education, so I'm suspecting they will be ineligible to receive public tuition come July one. Is that correct? So this is really just an approval? Not approval.
They, I, they intend to serve students. There is no special education approval as of July one. All schools have to, as you know. So this is, did they, they expect to serve students with special needs?
And maybe Heather can articulate what that means. I mean, obviously, with us sliding in on this deadline, we are also sliding into the other deadline for distinguishing between those who are willing and able to serve students with special needs and thus eligible to receive public tuition, and those who have not indicated an ability or willingness, and consequently would be approved, but ineligible to receive public tuition. So given our tight timeline, I'm wondering if we can't hear a little bit more about what that, what in essence this means.
So they will need to complete the attestation. I'm sorry that my dog has barked. I don't know if you can hear it. That all independent schools are going to actually need to complete this coming year so that, that they can be attesting that they're meeting the requirements for the new twenty-two-hundred series requirements. And then, I mean, I think I've shared that several times with the board that that's the.
We've yet to see what that is going to be, though, and it's July one Saturday. So I'm just wondering if they're clear, if they're saying they're intent to be eligible to receive public tuition, and that's what they're understanding this approval is going to be. What is, what is expected to be demonstrated? And since they would not have been approved prior, when you did your listening sessions or talking sessions or whatever you had done to provide some information to the field for how they go about finding themselves to be eligible to receive public tuition, they would have not been swept into that because they would not have been a prior approved institution.
So I mean, I see that Pat Palace Gray has her hand up, and I'm going to let Pat respond. And then if there's something else I need to say after that, I will. Thanks, Pat.
Yep, no problem. Yes, just to let you know that the board report was written that way because this is prior to July first. And we talked to them about going forth on July four, uh, July first, that there is a change and in order to be eligible to receive approved funds, that they have to have an open admissions policy. But you know, to what?
No, go ahead. I, I had a follow-up question, but I'd love to hear what else.
Okay. Well, basically, I think that's what the problem is, is that the way it had to be written, because right now at this minute, we don't have the ability to say a school wants to be, you know, eligible to receive or will not be eligible to receive. That's why it says general education right now. But they have indicated that they are going to take, you know, all comers.
And maybe, maybe this is a question, a follow-up question for Heather, because it's not been completely clear to me what we're expecting for those approved institutions to, and I'm sorry, Muhammad, I was just following up on the earlier question, so I see your hand, too, and I'm sure probably Jennifer does. But do we know what indicators those are that the state is going to feel comfortable suggesting? And this isn't really, this is the, the challenge of the timing we're talking about. We're sliding in under one deadline. We're bumping up against another deadline. We've not seen sort of clearly articulated indicators of how these schools that want to be eligible to receive public tuition will be demonstrating their ability to serve students with special needs and articulating their willingness to do so.
And let me, let me just say, and Heather, I don't mean to jump in here, but, but I think what we're looking at is an approval today. And I think the question about what happens after July first is going to be a conversation that needs to happen after July first. So I think, you know, to keep the issue focused on where we are today, the question is whether the school is compliant under the rules. I, I understand, Kim, that you're sort of forecasting, you know, in two days, what's going to be the reality, but I think, you know, given the, the short time that we have for this meeting, this is a question not just for this school. It's going to be a question for a lot of schools, and it doesn't really go to whether this school can be approved today. So I think we probably need to move the conversation along. I think Kim is frozen.
No, I'm not frozen. I, I hear you.
Okay. Muhammad, did you have your hand up still?
Yes, I did. And that was quite close to Kim's question. Looking at the green sheet, somewhere at the bottom, it says fiscal implications, none. I was just curious what that meant, whether they expect any funds or not. That, so that was a question, but if the timing for it is not okay, I can skip it, but I'm still curious about the non piece on the green sheet.
So. Yeah. Would you like me to respond?
Yes.
Would you like me to respond? So yes, so today, the ask is, and I'm really sorry. The ask today is for them to get general approval. That's all we're asking for today. And so the recommendation from the secretary is that they be, and, and from the Subcommittee is that they be approved for general education, just as it's specified. So the question about whether as of July first, they will be qualifying for public as Chair Samuelson said, they will be required to do what every other independent, every other approved school at that point will do, which will be to attest to the components that are in twenty-two-hundred series that allow them or basically, yeah, allow them to actually serve students who are on IEPs. And we haven't, we haven't seen that. You haven't seen that. We've been focusing, as, as you all know, on providing technical assistance to the field so that they understand that. Have not had a chance to come back and share that to the board. We'd be happy to. We've been communicating with the current approved independent schools, as, as you all know, and have provided some technical assistance through materials and then also through office hours. And so there won't be anything kind of new or different or you know, innovative about what those are. They're the same, that, the same components that we've been actually having conversations with the currently approved independent schools about.
Thank you. Muhammad, does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Thanks. And the, and I'm thinking this, since they hadn't previously been approved, maybe I'm answering my own question. But the balance sheet indicating evidence that there's adequate financial resources to operate for the two years then is not reliant on public tuition. Is that correct?
That's, that's my, my understanding is that because they are associated with with the foundation, with Willowell, they had, they had other sources of funding for this pilot year. And so that's my understanding. And.
Those sources of financing then continue for the two-year period?
They would be, they would be, they would be available.
I'm cognizant of the time. Oh, Kim, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I was just going to say, I'm, I'm gonna tell you I'm doing my best to get through materials, but as they came in very late, I'm, I may, and this is not, there's a lot of materials, and I think that it has been difficult to ensure that I'm able to give it a thorough review. Just, so that's the question.
Any other comments or questions?
Oh, I do have one other question. I'm sorry. When did the process begin for them? Like, why is this skidding in at the last minute?
I know the site, the site review was conducted June first.
And we applied initially in January. I think there's just been a backlog of, like, there is in every sector of people scrambling to get things done.
Okay. And is that, Heather, that was just a function of scheduling, assuming? Or maybe we lost Heather?
Maybe Pat can answer that.
Sure. Pat, I mean, I, I do remember that it's like typically six to eight months once an application is filed to get to where we are today, so that, you know, we're sort of right in that timeframe.
Can I call the question?
Yes. Do we need to take a vote on calling the question?
Technically, yes, you do. Or if you can just agree to, to vote, then and discussions all over, we can move forward.
Okay. Can we agree to vote? Does anyone have any objections to voting? Hearing no objection. We've heard the motion. It has been seconded. So all those in favor of approving the motion as read by Tom Lovett, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 I see Rich has his hand raised. All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Are there any abstentions?
I think I am going to abstain, and I apologize. It was my son's birthday. We didn't get this stuff till late, and I just I'm not sure that I'm going to be in a position to vote, but if I can catch up with it, I, I will. Sorry.
Okay. All right. So Kim is abstaining. Now, procedurally, if we have an extension, do we need to do a roll call? Or, I mean, it seems like everyone but Kim has voted yea.
So, you know, the Secretary of State said back in the beginning of all this, that if you have a remote meeting and it's not unanimous, then technically, you're supposed to have a roll call vote all the time. What I've always done is, I'll say if it's unanimous, then it was pretty much like a roll call vote. So I think you do.
So in an abundance of caution, Suzanne, if I could have you call the roll and ask board members for their vote.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Muhammad Joe.
I.
Kim Gleason.
Abstain.
Tammy Colby.
Yes.
Lyle Jepson.
Yes.
Tom Lovett.
Yes.
Gabrielle Uche. Jenna O'Farrell.
Yes.
Chair Samuelson, will you be voting?
Yes, in the affirmative.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
And Rich, we have one more. Rich Warner.
Next time, we should go alphabetically backwards, but I'm agreeing. Yes, aye.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Thank you all, and thank you to Pond Brook. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we know everybody really hustled to get here, and it was very last minute. We're very grateful. Thank you.
All right. So Tom, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. Next school is the Expeditionary School of Black River in Ludlow. I'm gonna start by just saying that this, this school has been in process for years and did come before our committee last, late last year and did not receive initial approval at that time. And they submitted a new application April eighteenth and had a site visit June twenty-second. And in talking to the agency staff, the agency sent four staff members to the school on the site visit, and they were very impressed with the staff and the board who showed, who worked really hard to bring it to this point, show great cooperation in answering the questions from the agency. And again, this is a chance to, again, kudos to all those involved in this, to bringing it to this point. Again, I'll make the recommendation at the end of these comments. It's a conditional approval, a recommendation for a conditional approval. There are several conditions, but let me just talk about the school first, and then I'll talk about the conditions and then read the recommendation. So the school is based in the previous site of Black River High School. Its mission is to help intellectually curious, resourceful students become confident in themselves to achieve personal fulfillment and civic engagement. And the four pillars of their educational philosophy are a global perspective, civic responsibility, community engagement, and environmental stewardship. Again, this is a school that leverages community resources. They do a lot of their learning outside the school building and community-based and outdoor education. They also have community members who believe so strongly in the school that they work pro bono as educators and a number of community members that come in as guest experts. The current enrollment is fifteen students. Their goal is to grow it to forty. Most of the staff is part-time. There is one full-time employee. That's the head of school who teaches English and social studies. High interest activities are taught by those pro bono faculty members like language, performing arts, fine arts, and arts and crafts. One of the staff members is not a US citizen, was, which was a, a question for our committee because by law, they can't, they're not in the fingerprint or abuse registry processes, uh, as a foreign national. They're not in those. The, so that was an interesting part of the application in the report. Their, their curriculum and instruction are proficiency-based, personalized, project-based. They offered in several modalities. There were some things that, some recommendations that came as areas for improvement. For example, the head, the current head is leaving, so that those roles as English and social studies teachers will need to be filled. They had no professional development or formal evaluation plan. They, they use a coaching model, and they didn't have a professional develop, development plan. They had a program of studies manual, but not a fully articulated curriculum document. And there were some students who, when they were out of school for either short or long period of time, were taught remotely. And there's a recommendation in there that they, that they will be taught by qualified staff in physical attendance at the school. There are a couple that are just, or a few that are just coming because of their new status and of the new independent rules, for example, having a plan for serving all students, having that on file. And a, a, a plan for delivering state assessments, which they haven't had to do before. And and then a plan for implementing flexible pathways, which they haven't had to do before, weren't able to do before. So those, the recommendations from that, and then there are some that just, there's one, actually, there's just a recommendation to continue their assessment of all incoming students for literacy and math, which they've been doing, and the recommendation there is to continue that. In our conversation, we added some, some stats, some parts of recommendations. I'm just going to tell you that there's several steps that have to go through. So I'm just going to take you through the timeline that the school will have to meet. So by July twenty-first, we're recommending that they reach out to the AOE to schedule and engage in technical assistance for implementing flexible pathway learning opportunity, and that that flexible pathway needs to be implemented or ready to be implemented by the time they reapply. We're recommending only a one-year approval. So sometime after January, when they reapply, they'll have to have that flexible pathway in place. Prior to the first day of the school, they need to hire content area staff, given the departure of head. And then within five days of the opening of school, in more than five days before the opening of school, they need to submit the qualifications of those staff to the agency. Also, before the first day of school, they need to develop, maintain on file a plan for professional development and evaluation, develop and maintain on file a plan for serving all students and develop or purchase a framework for a written curriculum to meet minimum courses of study for age, grade, and ability level. That, the written frame, the framework needs to be produced before the first day of school. The fully articulated curriculum will need to be produced by January first. And January first is also the deadline for having a plan in place for delivery of required state assessments. So there's, the agency staff, I think, did a good job in, in spacing out these requirements, so they did, weren't all due on the same day that they're reasonable timeframes. For example, the state assessments aren't given until after January one, so to have a plan in place by January one seems reasonable. So I'm going to make the motion that the State Board of Education grants conditional initial independent school approval to the Expeditionary School of Black River in Ludlow, Vermont, to serve students grades seven through twelve. This conditional approval is for one year through June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four. This approval is conditional on the requirement that the school reports to the Agency of Education within five business days, whenever any changes occur in enrollment, programs, policies, facilities, financial capacity, staffing, or administration during the approval period. This approval is also conditioned on the Expeditionary School of Black River, meeting the following conditions outlined in the visiting teens report enlisted below. I will say that. enlisted below. I will say that when we get to number seven and eight, there will be language that was added by the committee. Condition number one, content area staff must be hired prior to the first day of school and approved by the Agency of Education as meeting State Board of Education Rule 2226.8.1. Qualifications for all school year 2023 to 2024 staff must be submitted to the Agency of Education's independent school team, allowing for a minimum of five days to review prior to the start of school. ESBR must develop and maintain on file a plan for staff professional development and evaluation prior to the first day of school. ESBR must develop and maintain on file a plan for serving all students pursuant to State Board of Education Rule 2229 prior to the first day of school. ESBR must have a plan in place for delivery of required state assessments by January 1st, 2024. ESBR's direct instruction must be delivered by qualified staff to students who are physically in attendance at the school. ESBR must continue its assessment of all incoming students for literacy and math. ESBR must develop or purchase a written curriculum to meet the minimum course of study for age, grade, and ability level. Here's where it's just some additional language. A framework must be in place prior to the first day of school with a more fully developed curriculum prepared for reapplication. And then finally, prior to implementing a flexible pathway learning opportunity, ESBR must seek technical assistance. We added the language, ESBR will judge the agency staff no later than July 21st to determine a date by which technical assistance will be scheduled, engaged in, and plans outlined as part of the reapplication process.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Thank you very much, Tom, for that overview. I see Tammy has her hand raised.
Good afternoon. And Heather, this may be a question for you. I'm not sure. It feels like a pretty long list of stuff that needs to be made, you know, a list of conditions here. So my first question is, you know, all these things need to get done before the beginning of the school year, which is going to require the agency to develop a sign-off that all those things got done before the school year. Is that even a logistical possibility for all of that to happen? That's my first question for Heather, and then I have a second one. But Heather, is that a logistical possibility? Given that it's, you know, 4th of July is next weekend. I mean, I would think that all this would have to be signed off on for the school to be operable in September by like, you know, the beginning of August. Is that logistically possible?
I wonder, did we ever hear back from Heather when we thought maybe she got bounced off like 10 minutes ago?
I was just speaking and I'm sorry. I had my microphone on, but I did get bounced off and I've been back. So I apologize. To answer Tammy's question, I think we do, yeah, I did hear a question because I've been here. I've, I just, I, and then I was just speaking and you just couldn't hear me. Yes, I do believe that we think it's doable. I am going to actually allow Cassandra Ryan, who is the lead of this review on our independent schools review team, to embellish that a little further. My understanding is that our team is, is confident in having, you know, put forth a recommendation for approval and, and my, you know, me having put forth a recommendation for approval contingent on this list and, and thinking there's a good chance that it will, it will in fact happen. Cassandra?
Yeah. Hi, thanks Heather. I, I do think, I, I hear you. I think it is aggressive as it sounds, but I do think it's possible. We've established a, a very good relationship. We're communicating well. The school seems to understand the requirements. We have met the new interim head of school. We have spoken with the board, the board chair, all seem very committed. So I would agree with you that it's aggressive. I think I want to acknowledge that. I hear you there, but I do think we, we, we think it's possible for sure.
So I think my concern, just to follow up and then do one more question, is this, is that, you know, we heard at the last board meeting that a lot of parents and, and students are sort of counting on this school. And so if in fact, you know, this can't go down to the day before school starts to make a decision, right? Parents and students needed some runway here to prepare. So I'd like to, I don't know how to do this, but like, it would be, it is important to me that we're going to put this condition on it, that we also have, have a timeframe with it that if they cannot do it by some date, then, you know, that's it. Because it can't, it just can't go up to the day before school starts. Parents need a couple of weeks to plan. Like, you know, that's just being fair. So I don't know how to do that, but I just want to put that on the table. The second thing is, is maybe it's a question, maybe it's a comment, and maybe it's a question, is, you know, when I read this, I, a number of these items are items that they were required or asked to sort of remedy in past, you know, in past reviews. And I'm curious as to what, what we know about the fact that they didn't remedy and like fingerprints and things like that, right? Like, these are not new items. They've been brought up before. And I'm just going back to the testimony that we had, had at our, you know, in-person meeting, you know, from their attorney and others about sort of the volume of work that they've done and all this back and forth. But so I felt, I felt like it was odd that we still had things on the list that where there have been requests to remedy and they hadn't been done. So I'm curious as to like, do we, do we understand why that is and why, why that's still the case?
So let me take a crack at a few of these.
Yeah.
So, so, so the fingerprint, fingerprints was complied with for all the stu, all the staff that it could be, it was complied with. I think they have complied with the things that they, that they needed to. And there are some things that are before the first day of school. If we just go through them again, the one that seems to be the heaviest lift is they have to hire a couple of staff members. Or the hiring content area staff and having their qualifications, that's by for the first day of school. All the others is to develop and maintain a plan for professional development and evaluation, a plan for serving all students and a framework for their curriculum, which we acknowledged when we read the report, they, they have a framework in place. It's just not a, not in writing. And and then by January 1st, they have to flesh it all out. The school and the agency both thought that that was a reasonable timeline for them to have accomplished that, that goal by January 1st. But the other, the other things, we think that they already have the workings of a plan in place and that those other, those others develop and maintaining on file plans was not a heavy lift. The heavy lift is because we don't know what's, what the workforce looks like for them to hire the staff that they need. So, so the, right now, the timeline, Tammy, is
That's helpful.
Those, those will have to be done prior to the first day of school. That's our recommendation and the agency's recommendation, but we can move that back if you think there's need for a longer runway.
I think, and I'll be interested in what other people say. I think since this is an approval or a disapproval situation, right? This isn't, right? And I think that the date needs to be moved back. I'm just putting my hat on as an educator and a parent, right? That, you know, going right up to the day before school and then all of a sudden, for some reason, things aren't in place and then school starts the next day. I, I just don't feel like that's fair to the community or the parents or the students who go to the schools. I, I'd like to see that date moved back so that if there are still problems and the decision is to not move forward with their approval, that people have an opportunity to find other paths forward. It also gives the school itself maybe another chance to remedy, but that would just sort of be my preference. Thank you.
Okay. So I have a few thoughts, but Tammy, like, does an August 1st deadline?
That feels pretty reasonable to me, you know, and I, yeah. I think the only concern, I think, you know, Tom pointed out is the hiring issue, right? And, you know, it's, you know, we're going into the 4th of July weekend. That doesn't give a lot of time to nail down staff, you know, but at the same time, it makes it really hard for me to feel confident that they're going to be in a good place to have a school that meets the quality standards if they don't have somebody hired before August 1st. We know from the research that late and delayed hiring also oftentimes results in full-time subs and less qualified people in the classroom. So, you know, if, if they really don't know by the 1st of August and don't have staff in place, that would be, that would be a pretty big concern for me.
So I'll just, I'll just say that as somebody who's, who's run a school, August 1st would be an aggressive timeline. Mid, mid-August is when, would seem more reasonable to me, which is well before the first day of school.
When, when does the school, when is the first day of school? Is it late August or early September? Do we know?
I don't know. I imagine it's, it goes with the other public school calendars, which would be late August.
So Tom, let me, let me just sort of, I hear you on that from the school administration point of view. I, I agree with you. I'm also putting my parent hat on that says, you know, if the school's a no-go and it's two weeks before the school year, that's, that's pretty tough, right? So maybe we can figure out a way to split the difference on that.
Kendra, do you have an answer to the question? Kendra, I don't know if you're talking, but we
Okay, sorry, sorry. Thank you. This is the, the room of the Expeditionary School and I'm Kendra Rickert, the current head of school, but Gary Blodgett right here, the chair of the board, has an answer to all that and will speak.
All right. Thank you.
I don't know if I have an answer to all of that, but I do, I do have an answer to this question about staff. I do agree, it is aggressive. That's why we're hoping to have this approval today so we can get started quickly in this process. We do think we have a short-term plan that if, so that the school could open, even if we didn't, we have an intern head of school who, most of you may know Julie Pollan, who has been not only a teacher, a tech director, and a superintendent of many districts. She is stepping in as an intern and if we do get another teacher that is going to take over that role also, she has agreed to mentor that person. If we're in the most dire straits of having an ELA person besides the people that I talked to, almost all the staff, and we, we do have a number of part-time staff people and most of them are willing to come back, including a ELA person, but I also have my master's in ELA and I've been willing to come in and work with the school if I have, if I had to. I'm a retired teacher. I think we have conditions so that school could open in the fall. My wife would say, I hope that's not going to be the case, but, but that's what we could do to start if we had to. And we have a number of resources that, that we could reach out to. So we're pretty confident that we can start school. We would not, we would not have school if we didn't think we would have the people in place.
So when does your school year start? In the fall?
It follows, it follows the calendar of Two Rivers Supervisory Union. I believe that start date is the Tuesday after, no, the Wednesday before Labor Day. I don't remember.
Isn't it the 30th?
Oh, look, I've got the calendars in here. Yeah, I think that's the 30th, the Wednesday before Labor Day.
Okay.
Yes.
Could we set a deadline of August the 11th? That's a Friday. That would give families, you know, two and a half weeks to pivot if they needed to pivot.
So I, I would like to understand what the deadline is for.
To me, all the conditions. This is a conditional approval.
Leaving all of these conditions, even though
It'll be, it'll be four. There are four that are for the, we'll be moving the deadline for four of the, the actions from August 30th to August 11th. It will be hire the content area staff and get it approved by the AOE. Develop, maintain on file the, the plan for professional development and evaluation, develop and maintain on file a plan for serving all students and develop or purchase a framework for written curriculum to meet minimum courses study.
And I think that that is doable. Julie and I worked together for a number of years as administrators. In my past capacity, I was also a, an administrator besides a teacher. And we feel comfortable with those. The staff development, the evaluation pieces and so forth.
Okay.
She would be online right now, by the way, if she could, but she is actually on the road coming up from the Carolinas where her van kids are.
Okay. So I'm just aware
I'm not sure I got an answer to my question from them though, on why these conditions, which have been in the past packages, why they haven't been addressed yet. This has been going on for two years. So I know there are other hands. I just, I'd like to answer that question.
So I think they, from my view, as the only full-time employee here for the past three years, that the conditions around minimum course of studies and hiring staff is contingent on the revenue that becomes available from approval, that it was a budgetary constraint. And so much of the minimum course of study and what we're looking for in writing is syllabus and that mapped out for every content area. But without staff hire, because I was lead faculty and head of school, that is not as clearly articulated as the AOE would like. And so with approval and the, the stability of that funding, it will come together. I mean, because we did our first approval, our first attempt for approval took 19 months. So we're in that position of why hasn't it come together since January? Because we've still had the same budgetary constraints.
Does that also answer the question about, because I know professional development and the formal staff evaluation, those were also raised in December. So is your answer the same with regard to why that hasn't been addressed in the last six months?
I think, I'll let Gary comment on that because I would be the one who would be supervised and evaluated. So
So we did evaluate, Kendra, and, and I have been in a number of the classrooms, but Kendra has been available for all of these, a number of these people have a wonderful expertise in their field, but may not have had the experience, the educational background. And so she has used the coaching model as was written there. And she had made herself available all the time, all day long, all night long, by, by her computer. She's, if you, as the AOE found that with the staff that they interviewed, that they felt that the staff could come to her at any time to help. And as we said, it was more of a coaching model. But Julie and I are planning on making that a little bit more official, which will also help our staff development.
And I did submit the, the professional development plan was, that was crafted for me as a staff member that is a part of this, this last, this most recent application.
So I, I guess, because I'm just looking back at 2200 and it's 2226, what's required in the application. And it is pretty clear, you know, professional staff qualifications, that's 2226.8.1, professional staff development, 2226.8.2, professional environment, 2226.8.3. So I, I hear what you're saying, but you know, to fit into the rules for independent schools, the rules are pretty clear. And I, I'm still not understanding why if these issues were flagged in December, they're still being flagged now. Like, that, that part doesn't make sense to me.
Well, after, after we had that review, we worked on it ourselves and we also brought it to our attorney, who's worked with you a number of times, to have him look at how we were feeling we were addressing this. We also worked with Dr. Chaucer from Castleton to see how he felt, if we were addressing this appropriately. And they both felt that we were. But working with Cassandra and Pat this last time, we had a wonderful, felt we had a wonderful relationship and something that we could clear up some of the misunderstandings between what they were looking for and what we were presenting. And so we feel very confident after, to be going ahead and working with the AOE and, and addressing these things more clearly to them. We felt we were addressing them.
Okay. So two more questions and I'm, I'm going to try to keep this brief because I realized that we were right up against time. Could you explain to me or someone, I'm not sure who, to whom this is addressed, but the, the employee who's not been fingerprinted because he or she is not an American citizen? Because I don't see, you know, I went back and I looked at 16 TSA Section 255 and like, I don't see a carve-out for non-citizens. So I'm just trying to understand that. I see Cassandra's hand raised, so maybe.
Maybe we'll have that.
Cassandra, did you want to answer?
Well, I was actually kind of, I raised my hand at the last question. So on, you know, access to professional development and feedback evaluation. So I don't know if now's the time you'd want me to respond to that or.
Sure.
Okay. That's, no, that's okay. You know, I just never know. So I just wanted to give you some feedback from our point of view, from the review staff that were there and acknowledge that what we're looking for there is more of a structured plan. It's not necessarily that we didn't see anything happening. So we did hear about office hours where Kendra is available to staff. That's the head of school is available to staff and staff are encouraged to come to her. She does one-on-one feedback and she does, you know, does provide the, the teaching staff with feedback. And I think everyone felt they could access some development. There just wasn't a structured plan. So as we build a school to be more successful for the future and to launch better, we thought it would be appropriate to add that condition so that they have a more structured plan, especially with the situation where a head of school is leaving and a new one is coming in. That sort of written and documented plan, we felt was what was important there. Not so much that we didn't feel anything was happening. Again, it just wasn't written in a structured document.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful. Do you also have an answer to the question about the fingerprint? Not to put you on the spot.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I, I'm always open. Tell you what I know and what I don't know. So honestly, that one was a stumper for us to some degree because it's just not something that we run into every day. We're looking into it, but we do, we acknowledge that this is a situation where there's a staff member who is part-time, who lives in another country, so not physically onsite at the school. And it's just, it, we may be running into a place where the law didn't maybe anticipate that. I'm not entirely sure. We're looking into that more and going to be able to advise them if that relationship continues on how best to make sure they're able to move forward with that particular staff member.
So is the staff member just doing virtual teaching or just teaching? Okay.
My understanding of the visit and certainly folks at ESBR, correct me, is that that staff member has been living in Germany and will continue to be living in Germany and remotes in to provide instruction.
And just to clarify in the backstory, that staff member was an exchange student at Black River High School many, many years ago and returned with her son and was physically present as a parent for the first three months of this year. She, they are residents of German, speak German, but she also speaks Spanish. And because we weren't able, and English and French, we weren't able to hire because of workforce issues, a Spanish teacher, she offered to be available. It would be 4:30 her time and 11:00 AM our time. So from a top priority, student wellness, safety perspective, I was always here onsite with students as they accessed and spoke in Spanish with that individual in Germany. And then they got a tour of Frankfurt, Germany, near where she lives on her phone, where they've never been. So there, it, it.
And when she was here, we tried to do the.
Yeah. And when she was here, she went to do the fingerprinting because of the system. But I had her passport and her visa and she was living with family, with people who had kids coming to this school. So there was a familiarity. I'm with you all. And I think it's a condition as we as a state, as a, as a system changes to, to look into. But it won't likely be a practice for ESBR going forward because of what we've learned as a result.
Yeah. And just to quickly wrap up my part of it, we've already reached out to VCIC to see if there's something that we can learn from this as well.
Okay. And that actually raises a question about like the, the virtual learning aspect because I, I do know that distance learning programs are not eligible for public funds. And I'm not hearing anyone saying that, you know, there are aspects of this program that qualifies distance learning, but I just want to check that assumption and make sure that I'm not missing something.
No, I'll actually just point out, Jennifer, that one of the conditions is that they deliver direct instruction by qualified staff to students who are physically in attendance at the school. It's one of the conditions.
Okay. Is that a new set of circumstances or have things been that way?
So I, I'll let the school answer that. My understanding is that that is a, a new restriction. Like there, there were some, especially with absences, some students who were accessing instruction remotely. And that, that will not be, that will be not the case going forward.
Okay. And the agency is supportive of this change?
Yeah, the, the recommendation came from the agency.
Okay. And my last question, and I appreciate everyone's patience on this. Looking back at the December report, on page five of that report, there was some discussion about the literary specialist and how she works with LEA staff to support student learning by grade and per IEP 504 planned requirements. The report says that the specialist reported that she has not met and does not work with the LEA staff and has not read student IEPs 504 plans or the service delivery plans provided by the Mount Holly School District. And I would love an update on that.
Would you, who would you like that update from, from us or the AOE staff?
Yeah, I think from you.
Okay. So. I'm sorry. I didn't hear the other person.
I just said whoever has an answer.
So in December, the, the literacy specialist who's mentioned was accessing remotely as well. And I am, I was listed as the ELA teacher, which is my prior experience professionally and licensure. So we had four students in receipt of service plans to, elected not to use them. And so this year, so that literacy special that's being referenced is in addition to the literacy specialist that TRSU sent to ensure the delivery of those service plans. And so the service plans for those two students who maintained them this year were being met by a staff member from TRSU who are coming weekly. The literacy specialist being mentioned in that December report was a separate component of the ELA class that was integrated with some science curriculum.
Okay. So someone is reading the IEP and 504 plans and ensuring they're being complied with.
Absolutely. Myself and the school counselor. And then we communicate, this is the coaching model. Absolutely. And I have attended, and I have paperwork to show this, all those meetings that are administered by the LEA, in this case, that was Two Rivers Supervisor Union.
Okay. Thank you. Kim, I think you.
Yeah. So I have tremendous concern in the same way you mentioned, Jennifer, that I had read all of the material that I could before what we got. And I read this material first because we've had a lot of traffic on this. But I had gone back and looked at the December decline. It was from a March report. And so there's been a lot of time to have come into compliance. The concern that we don't have a minimum course of study or plan for that, and we don't have staff, that we would consider approving a school with a list of eight contingencies. We simply, like, we definitely thought more as we looked at whether or not Lincoln was ready or Ripton was ready. I understand it's different, but much of what was in the report from March has yet to be remedied. And the notion that it can't be remedied until they're insured, public tuition means not only are they looking to meet these conditions for approval, but they're expecting that that means they're getting public tuition, which I would expect that our conditions for eligibility to receive public tuition and be both able and willing to serve students with special needs would be far more robust than what is demonstrated here. I can't begin to imagine that we can or should be sending public tuition when there is not, like, we may consider just making sure staff can be qualified and skid in, you know, sometime in August to a program that doesn't have a minimum course of study that's well-articulated for age, grade and ability level. That is among the most fundamental things. So I'm really just terribly concerned about considering approval. And the notion that this has been ongoing for two years without remedy of some of the most fundamental matters, it feels like, but for these time crunch circumstances, we said no in December. I don't see that we've, we are getting a proposal that is better remedied than December. What is our, our compulsion for saying yes now? I, I put that out to whomever or if the school can offer us, it sounds as though, Jennifer, at least in your response to your question, it was about whether or not they could do these things without tuition. I, that is, that is becoming a moot point in two days. Because I can't see if they can't meet these, how they become even self-attestation, Heather. How we could turn our heads and say they're ready to serve students with special needs and send public tuition.
Are you directing the question at me, Kim?
Well, I just, I, I, am I understanding it wrong or differently? Or does somebody feel differently? Or is there a response to any of that? Because those are the concerns I hold. I, I did read this report because I was waiting anxiously to see where we came since December because I was trying to remember what we did in December and why. And I think we were right in December and I'm just not seeing it better now.
Yeah. I'm also going to invite Cassandra or Pat from the team because we made an assumption with one of the other pieces that there hadn't been improvement or progress. And I want to make sure that that's not the case here. So I would ask the team, not to put them on the spot, but again, I think our team is comfortable with a conditional approval for all those pieces based on documentation of these components that, that are the conditions. So Cassandra and, and, well, how about just Cassandra? I mean, you, you did the site visit. You've all reviewed. I'm just not sure because I haven't in-depth looked at the application and been part of it about whether there has been no progress, whether there is no curriculum, those kinds of things.
Yeah, I don't think that we intended our report to reflect that we didn't feel that there was progress. So I'm sorry if that's how that came across. In fact, I do think that there is progress. I don't think that, I don't think you're seeing a a ready situation. You know, they're not ready tomorrow to open their door. And that, we hoped we had reflected with all of the conditions. I also want to say that probably maybe it's a bit of my involvement where I really do like to see things documented. So I really wanted, I pressured them. I said, what's documented, what's not documented? Again, trying to make sure they're prepared. So please don't mistake that we didn't think there was progress because we definitely saw progress. We saw involvement. We saw an understanding, which is super important, that they understood what we, what we need and what they need to do. I also think that there is this tendency to look backwards at their performance as a recognized school. And I just wanted, I had my hand up a little bit and then I took it down. Is when we're talking about some of the things that we were reviewing, that was their activity as a recognized school, which is not the same set of regulations that they will be under as an approved school. So in some regards, the answers that they gave are perfectly fine for a recognized school, not so much for an approved school. And we don't expect the behavior to be the same either. We do expect that they understand the difference of what they're asking for now. So again, regarding like IEPs and stuff, that's a recognized school that we were asking, what did you do in the past? Moving forward as an approved independent school, I was very confident in the answers that they shared with us as to how they would move forward as an approved independent school and, and that they understood the difference there. So I just wanted to share that, that, you know, it's an interesting kind of transition when we're talking about what did you do in the past? We just have to keep that in mind, that that was their behavior as a recognized school, which doesn't inform moving forward. If that makes sense. And I hope I didn't confuse it by saying that, but I just want to make, it's, it's hard for us when we're out on reviews to always keep that straight. You know, we challenge each other to remind each other to say, wait a minute, that's recognized, that's an approved. And I felt really confident they understood the difference.
So. And I don't want to misunderstand. I just want to say I'm not, it, it isn't an attack or on the agency. I think you're appropriately doing your due diligence. I am just seeing a list of eight conditions, many of which are among the most fundamental to, we ask homeschoolers to provide evidence of their, their course of study, right? We are saying that does not exist here and there's not adequately, adequate staff that's qualified and ready to go. And we're months out and we're trying to say yes to something under the conditions that the most fundamental are missing. So I, I'm gonna sort of leave, I, I don't disagree that there need to be conditions. I am disagreeing that with eight conditions and students attending in August. I appreciate your due diligence. I appreciate the detail you were able to provide. I, I don't agree with the recommendation when some of those eight are so incredibly fundamental to serving our students.
If I, if I can just kind of maybe speak to the staffing and maybe that will help because I think it's probably bigger than just staffing, but I'll, I'll try to stay focused on staffing. It, it, it made sense to us. I just want to kind of share why, why we were okay with that. And it is very common right now that staffing's an issue across all of our schools, whether they're public or whether they're independent. And so, and particularly with the uncertainty of this application, I think it made sense to me that they, they didn't hire a bunch of staff in anticipation of this review, that in fact, they've got a sort of linear approach where they want to make sure they're going to be able to offer folks employment, making sure that they are a approved independent school before they entered into those agreements with staff. So for me, that made some sense. And so I just wanted to acknowledge why that was less of a concern. Again, with companioned with that condition, right? Like, I mean, like, it's not that we were just leaving them out there. It's companioned with a pretty strong condition that says you've got to not only hire this staff, but you've got to send us their resumes, you've got to send us their qualifications. And we have to approve them before you can actually move forward on your first day.
So Cassandra, can I just follow up? Because that was really helpful for me to understand, you know, looking at a school that's currently recognized and then thinking about requirements. So I appreciate that. And I guess the question is like, when the board considers an approval application from a school, are, is, is the school who's seeking approval status, are they not expected to be compliant with those rules of approval? Like at the moment of the application? Because I think that's where I'm getting a little bit tripped up, where I was thinking, well, you know, if they're seeking to be approved, that I want to see, you know, check, 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 all the way down 2200. And what I'm hearing you say is that it's a little bit of a process maybe. And that's, I mean, that would explain sort of the contingencies with deadlines, but that feels different than what we've done in the past. So I just want to make sure I understand.
Sure. No, I, I love that we're talking about that because that's in fact, one of the things we did is we looked in the past to see how we had handled very similar situations. For one recent one where there wasn't the ability to consider them ADA at the approval, we put a condition on them that said you must be, you must provide the agency with an ADA, you know, compliant bathroom. I think it was a bathroom. Don't quote me on that, but there was a, you know, a failure there. But that didn't prevent you from reviewing it or approving it as long as you were able to apply the condition. I think we've also seen multiple cases recently. There was one where there wasn't complete staffing at the time of the review. And so as a condition, we applied that condition that they must be staffed. In fact, it's a rule anyway. So even if it wasn't a condition, they would still have to have appropriate staff. So I think that we actually felt pretty conservative. You know, I think a one-year approval, I mean, I just don't want anyone to mistake what that is. That means we're going to continue to work with them. And as, as quick as, as November, they're going to get a notice that they've got to start this whole process over again. And we're going to be with them throughout that renewal process to, to see how they did and to make sure that what we expected is what we can now verify. um, to, to see how they did and to make sure that what we expected is what we can now verify.
Um, Kim, before I go to you, I see that Kendra has her hand up, and I just want to see if there's anything to add to that.
And Lyle's.
With respect for everyone's time, we're taking our hand down, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Um, Lyle and then.
It's okay. We, it's okay. We'll wait. If you have anything specific you need us to answer, we will.
Okay. And I'm also aware, I think Tammy needs to leave soon, so. Um, Lyle?
So I get, guess my comment is that um, ESBR has, has been provided with a finish line. And this is the finish line, and I know that maybe some people feel like it's kind of gone on and on and on. And it has, and I think they feel that way too. I think that they have applied, been denied, told to apply again. They have, they've gone through the process, they're working with the agency. And now there are reckon, continued recommendations from that application, and they have the finish line. Um, I would, having been in education for a couple of years, um, I would go back to the recommendation that we give them, maybe that enhanced time. Uh, someone mentioned the eleventh, I think it was, eh, the eleventh of August, and that was Tammy. I would even say the eighteenth of August, because I know I have hired people several days before school started, and it was stressful. I think I heard Tammy.
Here is, you know, hiring, I mean, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if they don't hire someone by, say, August eighth, eleventh, the school can't open, and families will need to find a new school to send their kids to. Um, I think that's a little bit different than when you already have a school, and you're just trying to like slot in another teacher. It's not going to like take down the whole school if you don't.
I, I hear that, and I hear Tammy's concern being, I believe, adequate communication with parents. And if parents, parents could be aware tomorrow, the school could tell them tomorrow that we have these things we need to do. It's really up to you if you want to wait, or if you would like to look for something else. So I, I think we have the recommendation of the agency staff. They appear to be comfortable. There is a timeline and a finish line. And I think we need to move this forward.
Okay. I see that Jenna and then Rich. Kim, I'm going to hold off on you just because I haven't heard from these other two, if that's okay.
That's fine. I just appreciate your, everyone's questions. These were a lot of the same questions that Lyle and Tom had asked yesterday. Um, I agree with Lyle around that there is a finish line, right? And there's things that need to be accomplished by the time they get there. Um, and that's helped us in framing your decision to move this forward. I also um, was thinking back to the eleventh date, and I think it might be important to keep it August eleventh as a, as a good hire date, keeping in mind that whoever you hire, it needs to be fingerprinted. Like eh, you can't hire someone on August thirty-first, and they can't start the next day. So there's, I mean, there could be a process here to get a person in the classroom in front of kids, and they need to do many, they need to do, like, there's multiple things that also need to happen by the time you hire.
Well, and I, I will say, based on personal knowledge, I know the state of Vermont is taking about three months to run fingerprint checks right now.
Correct.
Yeah. It's a good point. Um, Rich, I think your hand was up.
Yeah, I, I'd like to just move this forward. You know, the, the, the agencies approved this. Our subcommittee that we have a lot of faith in has, you know, was good with this, and I would, but I'd like to say that we, let's vote on this. I'm not going to call it, but um, you know, I think we spent a lot of time, and parents will know what's going on, and you've got a really committed group. I'm sorry I wasn't around in December when things were bad, or the, I mean, beforehand, when it's been approved, there's been approved. I can understand a lot of difficulty with trying to hire people. You don't even know if you're going to get approved or not. So I, I really think we need to put our, our faith in the, the group that's been doing these for a while on the board in the Agency of Education. So I'd really like to see us just vote on this.
All right. Thank you. Um, Kim, any final words? Oh, and Mohammed.
Allah, I think Mohammed should go first, and then I definitely would like to be able to say a couple of final words.
Bless, bless, Kim. Kim, Kim, go ahead, please, please.
Okay. Are you sure, Mohammed? Um, I, I guess I am going to continue to say this contingency on receiving public tuition um, is, is no longer, like, just approval is not going to do that come July one. If the, I'm, have concerns that this is our new standard, the precedent we are setting regarding our review process moving forward for renewals. I know that new approvals are going to be eh, moratorium. But renewals, if we could renew a school that was all of a sudden without staff, without a, a um, minimum course of study, I, I just go back to that being fundamentally required for home study programs. So to have a school operational without a minimum course of study is, I, I just simply can't get past that. Um, and if this is contingent on tuition, would this feel as though this is an okay standard for approval to receive public tuition? And again, maybe that's a Heather question. Is this the standard and the contingencies we're going to put in place for those schools who are eligible to receive public tuition? Because they've said in no uncertain terms, they can't hire unless they're going to get public tuition. So what is, is this the standard that's going to be okay with these conditions for approval to receive public tuition, Heather?
Um, I think that a lot of different things are being conflated in this question. So what we will actually use to, and again, this is just as the first pass, because we can't possibly review every single currently approved independent school by July first. It's impossible. And so the process that we're using is to actually have um, a set of assurances like we do for EQS, like we do for a bunch of other things that we do in education. Um, so I, I guess I'm just confused about why would, why would we think this is the new normal when, you know, part of the reason we tried to from a high-quality perspective, look at the, eh, the two schools that you had before you today is because of a moratorium that was placed from the General Assembly. So I don't think I don't, I'm not really seeing like the reason to be thinking, is this what we're now going to do? Um, it's eh, eh, it's a conflation of many different um, types of approval in your question.
Our conditions for approving should have consistency. So the next school that comes without a minimum course of study and staffing, or a change in their situation when they're up for renewal, we'll look at the decisions we made. The agency in December eh, recommended against approval. The state board didn't approve. And we have an eight list of contingencies that the school itself said their ability to meet those contingencies relies on their ability to receive public tuition. I would imagine our attestation for ability to receive public tuition come Saturday is that they have adequate staffing, courses of study, um, the means and ability to serve students with special needs. And if our attestations don't require that, or if they do, how is this school going to meet that to have the money to be able to hire the people and meet the conditions of this conditional approval? And how can we say it's okay to hire come August and not have a minimum course of study in place?
I, I'm not sure who that was, but eh, these are all the questions, and they're not conflated. They, very much so by, by what the school itself has said has been their holdup for being able to comply with the financial ability to do so.
Before Kendra speaks, can I, can I just say what the subcommittee saw and why, why we are okay with this? Because I think, eh, I think you're exaggerating the case. Eh, it's not that they don't do professional development or evaluation. It's just that the way they do professional development evaluation did not, Cassandra wanted more documentation and something more formal. It's not that they don't do it. They have a plan. It's just not up to the standard that the agency staff wanted. Um, it's not that they don't, they haven't served students who came with special needs. They have. It's just that you don't have a plan in place um, on, in writing, documented on how they're going to do that. It's not that they don't have a minimum course of study. I mean, they, they out, like, you've read the report. They use Yale Education's curriculum for English. They use the art of problem solving for math. They use the Framework for Social Stud, College Career and Civic Life Framework for Social Studies. They use Next Generation Standard and Curriculum Maps. They use National Core Art Standards. They use the curriculum framework for eh, the Society of Health and Physical Educators. And they have stuff. It's not that they don't have it. It's just that it was not in a format that was formal enough and documented at, that the agency staff wanted to see. My comment at the meeting yesterday was this framework, to, to put this in writing, doesn't seem like a big lift to me for the beginning of school. Maybe eh, you know, getting all the syllabi written down and documented and all of that. That's a lot of, that's a lot of work and work that quite frankly, faculties don't like to do, but, but it's not like they don't have, they don't have anything. They have something. It just wasn't up to the, the standards or the documentation that the team wanted to see.
So I would, um, if I may, this is Kendra, the head of school at ESBR, and I want to point out, because I respect everyone's concern, but on page eight of the Program of Studies, the revision we made since December, and then reviewed this with Dr. Harry Chaucer and attorney Mark Ottinger, was we inserted the graduation requirements and then the assessment evaluation. So our revision of for what you heard in December, that meets that minimum course of studies, is to be more specific about the graduation requirements. Those graduation requirements are from Bern Burton, St. J Academy, and other schools. We modeled that C V U. We took it. We actually um, had that explained. And the prior application, and this is where I, in the name of moving things forward, and I would like to offer to help to work with the community, is the, is a question I have about the next independent school application that will be used in January by ESBR and other schools, because that was last revised in two thousand sixteen, and everything we've written is anchored in Act seventy-seven and Act sixty-one, Flexible Pathways and Connected Community Schools. And some of the language in the independent school approval application that we use conflicted with the principles that are possible, that have come with legislation since that two thousand sixteen revision. Minimum course of studies is language that from my professional experience that predates Act seventy-seven. And that's why we heard the agency staff's concern in December. We revised the Program of Studies, which outlines the minimum course of studies, and then added additional funds to work with Dr. Chaucer and Mark Ottinger to make sure we were in alignment with the laws that are in place for schools. So I welcome a conversation as a career educator and a citizen in the state on this issue. But for today to hold up ESBR after two and a half years of working to start up this school, when we've made that revision, and there's volumes of documentation of our attempts to do that, and, and our commitment to continuous improvement is where I wanted to clarify that there have been changes, and thank you, Tom. There is a minimum course of study in place.
Okay, let me, let me just pause there because I know that Tammy needs to leave, actually twenty-eight minutes ago. Um, do we, eh, do board members need more information, or are we ready to vote? And not to, you know, put this on Tammy, but I, I do feel like we've had a rather robust discussion for an hour. Um, so I, I mean, if people have more questions that will help them to reach an answer, we can keep going, but I think if people know how they're going to vote, we might as well vote.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Is that vote including some sort of August timeframe? And if that is, did we agree on what that is?
We discussed.
Wouldn't that require an amendment to the motion? And I didn't hear one, so I think it's still the main motion is on the floor, and, and that's what we should vote on, unless somebody wants to make an amendment.
Okay, so could I move that we amend Tom's motion to update the deadlines for paragraphs one, two, three, and seven, which are the um, four paragraphs that Tom mentioned, to August the eleventh?
I see that as a friendly amendment.
So no need for a second if it's a friendly amendment?
Eh, that's my understanding.
I'll second it. Eh, just for procedure.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
True. And then can I just ask a question? Why the others were um, like, five and six? Are they not um, required to have assessment of incoming students for literacy and math and not required to um, have? Right in?
I said, I would, I, I would add five and six to that.
Okay.
So the only thing that isn't for that date is their preparedness to do state assessment.
Which doesn't happen until the spring.
Right, understood.
Flexible pathways isn't do until their reapplication.
Okay. Um,
And and they don't need to do flexible pathways?
Well, they haven't been able to because they had, it's only, um, there was not, eh, eh, it was not open to them. Um, for example, dual enrollment was not open to them.
Because they were recognized, not approved.
Right, right.
Okay, so they won't need to make that available to students in the fall?
They can't. And they, they've got to work, they've got to work with the agency in order to do that.
And that's okay?
I, I think it's okay. They can't, they can't, you can't ask them to have it in place when they weren't allowed to. And if you look at the school already, if, if, if you look at the school and their curriculum already, what counts is a flexible pathway for a lot of schools. I think they already have it. If you look at how they, how they um, deliver their program, they already have it. But they just, again.
I would agree with Tom. They're, they're already there. They need to document that. And so I, I would turn to Gary and say, is the eleventh something that you said was okay with your uh, staff to have everything done by the eleventh?
Yes.
I'm unmuting us. Gary, yeah, Gary's going to respond because.
Yes, that, that seems to be fine. That timeline seems to be fine. And eh, I agree with eh, Lyle and Tom. A number of these things we're already doing, we'll be just working with the A O E to make sure that it's eh, the plan is.
Okay, so just to clarify, friendly amendment to Tom's motion, we are changing the dates of paragraphs one, two, three, five, six, and seven to August the eleventh. Okay, um, I'd like to do a motion.
I don't know if you can see, Jen. I see Mohammed.
Okay, um, we.
Oh, thank, thank you about Lyle, as just mentioned, my point, which was, okay. Um, so thank you, Lyle.
So Suzanne, could I ask you to do a roll call, please?
Yes. Mohammed Jobe.
Yes.
Tom Lovett.
Yes.
Jenna O'Farrell.
Yes.
Gabrielle Lucci. Rich Warner.
Yes.
Lyle Jepson.
Yes.
Tammy Colby.
Yes.
Kim Gleason.
No.
Chair Samuelson, will you be voting?
Yes, in the affirmative.
Okay. That's seven to one.
All right. Um, so thank you. That, this was a really helpful conversation from several different angles. I think it was really helpful to hear from the agency um, to sort of get some more background information. It was helpful to hear from the school. Um, this is a very, very um, aggressive deadline, as we've discussed. Um, but we wish you all the best.
And I just asked, Jen, would it be reasonable that we get follow-up at the August meeting? I mean, if they don't meet the conditions, they're no longer an approved school, correct?
Eh, we set deadlines. I, I was just, um, on behalf of ESBR, Kim, an update can be provided at the state board meeting in August. But if not approved, eh, it is a recognized school, and it will open as a recognized school on the budget that it's been working off of.
Yep, and then the tuition.
Yep, and then the tuition question will be one that you'll be looped in. I'm sure Heather and AOE will be looping you into whatever the required conditions are for attestation and approval of public tuition as well.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So just turning back to the agenda, this brings us to public comment. If there are any members of the public who wish to be heard, you can raise your hand, either by raising your hand on Teams or star five. If you're on the phone. Not seeing anybody, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So I'll move. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lyle, all those in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No, all right, thank you all, we stand in adjournment.